Okay.
Good evening. And welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting of the Sedalia School District 200, called to order at 6:30. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by saying here.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kimpton?
Here.
Mrs. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
And Ms. Schrader is here.
In the event that sirens go off, the stairwell off to our right here do wing down to the lower level, we can find an interior classroom and hold each other's hands.
Thank you, Dr. Fraley. You will now stand and say this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will now ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public and staff comments. Anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. As you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And as you approach the podium, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satin and he will share those items with the board at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks may be limited to three minutes and to one appearance. And questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. Sedalia School District Foundation. NEA. SCEA.
Josh is at NEA.
I'm here, it just took me a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm a local NEA member. Every month, we kind of put our heads together and try and figure out what to say that's relevant in front of everybody. And a few people made the comment that sometimes when we get up here, our comments are negative. And that's never the intention. We're always just trying to bring things toward to the board that like we may have a concern with. But it's the end of the year. We got through another one, and I'm super happy. And I just want to say, I think most of my union members would agree with me, federal education, big question mark. State education, big question mark. I have never been happier or more comfortable with my local educational system than I am right now. I can see any one of y'all out at Woods, or out at Mayfest, or wherever, and we can have a conversation. If there's a problem, I have like, there is no hesitation. I can email Dr. Fraley, I can email Mr. Pillock, whoever. I feel so comfortable with the people that are in front of me right now. And I just want to say that is absolutely appreciated more than you can imagine. Because there have definitely been years where that was not the case. And I want to say thank you.
Thank you. That's greatly appreciated on this end, too. Now SCEA.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Fields, and I currently serve as president of SCEA. We are very excited to announce that we were able to fulfill our goal of two $1,000 senior scholarships. Our winners this year were Josie Peck and Amelia Hofstetter. Both of these ladies, sorry, my allergies are getting me today. Both of these ladies have parents who are SCA members, which made them eligible for the scholarship. And so they each will be getting $1,000. This year, SCEA partnered with over 20 local businesses for Teacher Appreciation Week. We created a coupon book, and it was very heartwarming to see how many local businesses, from coffee shops to our health store, Papa Jake's, just tons of different people coming forward with a nice discount for teachers and showing their support. And we are happy. We are almost to summer, and we hope you are, too.
Thank you. The next item is the Prime Center statewide growth report. Ms. Gilmore, Ms. Panier, Ms. Brownfield, Ms. Nolan.
Good evening. We're here to recognize two of our buildings in our district with the Prime Center Growth Award. We have brought several board meetings ago, Skyline Elementary, and now we're here to recognize Horseman Elementary and Smith Cotton Junior High. And if you remember, the Prime Award Growth Report deals with student growth during our, for our math scores from grades three to four. And Horseman received this award in mathematics for the 22-23 school year. And so we'll let Ms. Panier kind of talk about what that looked like at Horseman.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. While Skyline did receive this award a couple weeks ago, or a couple board meetings ago, ours is about beating the odds. So ours wasn't just on overall scores for our fourth grade level, moving from third grade test scores to the fourth grade. But this is for students of, that they considered with low-income households. And so the cool part about it was this prime chose to focus on these gaps between low-income and no low-income families, and see which schools had the highest growth rate in those low socioeconomic statuses. And Horseman made the mark. And so we do have a high-needs building, and it just goes to show that they can learn, and you just have to meet their needs first. So with that, that high growth, literally, we were able to outperform statistically and beat those odds. With that being said, I do want to recognize my staff, and they will come up and help receive this award because it takes every single one of them, not only from our teachers, but to our support staff, our social worker, and instructional coach. And to name specifically, Bonnie Wolf is our sole fourth-grade math teacher, and she has really changed the look. When we departmentalized three years ago, this is when we started having some major growth in math. And so that's exciting for us. It does take K through three to help make that difference and set those foundations for those kids. I'd like to give a shout out to Hillary Hubbs, who was my instructional coach during that timeframe, and who also helped kind of transform what our instruction in the math department looked like. And specifically also, name Sharon Smith, who does our, a lot of intervention time with our math students. And Kyra Brandt, who is our social worker. Because we all know if our students' needs aren't met, they cannot focus on learning. And so she does make sure these low socioeconomic students have what they need. They have their hairbrush in the morning, they have food in front of them. If they've missed breakfast, we always find something for them to eat. We clothe them, we just care for them. And Ms. Bunch and Ms. Muntz are my third-grade math teachers, who also helps at that stage and really make a difference on that math test for us as well. But again, it takes all of our staff, K through four, to make a difference. And we are just excited that the prime community bothers to look at this kind of statistical data, because the state basically looks at, did you grow the top-notch kid versus the bottom kid? And they don't always look at those subgroups. So it is excited to get this recognition. So please, staff, come up and join us.
Ms. Nichols, would you like, Ms. Nichols, would you like to come down and take a picture with us?
Oh, okay.
Again, what I reiterate, was Ms. Panier had said, it does take a village, it takes all K through four teachers to make this growth. So I would like to extend a yahoo to Horseman Elementary for this amazing growth. Congratulations. As Ms. Gilmore indicated, our junior high also received the Growth Award for Math in the same timeframe, the 22-23 school year, also within that same subgroup of students, where you may not always see that growth. So we're very excited about that. And Ms. Nolan is here to share more.
Good evening. Can my staff go ahead and come down, and I'll try to kind of introduce as they come down. I invited my whole math department, but of course, not everybody was able to come. But we have Ms. Cruz, who teaches sixth-grade math, Ms. Hoak, who teaches sixth-grade math, Ms. Matts, who teaches eighth-grade math, and we have Ms. Irochetta, who now is a theater teacher, but who at the time, during when they did all this data, was one of our math teachers. So she definitely played a role in this. We also have Ms. Holston, our instructional coach, who focuses on math, who played a large part in this, because she helped pull a lot of kids after COVID to do some intervention with them in the mornings. So she definitely played a big role in this, as well as our social worker, Ms. Wollery. It was about 10 to 12 years ago when I was an instructional coach, and this was a very different conversation. Mr. Curry might remember that. The current curriculum director at that time had some tough conversations with our math department several years ago, because we were consistently not scoring where we needed to be. Our math department now has done a complete 180. We have been above state average the last few years, and I'm just so, I'm so proud of them. If anybody's ever worked with junior high-aged kids, you will know that it can be a challenge. So the fact that these ladies are able to come to work with this age group, and meet them where they're at, and then help them grow and find success in their subject area, is definitely something to celebrate. And as you know, this award focuses on helping our low-income students find success and growth, and this could not have been done without the help of our social worker, Ms. Denise Wollery. Ms. Denise has made it her mission that our students' basic needs are met every day. Without accomplishing this, they would not have had the tools that they needed to thrive in the classroom. Ms. Denise is retiring in just a few short days, and so she's been such a huge asset to me, to our students. She's been a steadfast presence in our building, and so she will truly be missed. So I just, I want to thank all these individuals that are here to accept the award this evening. I am truly blessed and grateful to have them in my building.
Mrs. Brownfield? I've only been on the board a couple of years. Have, in previous years, if we had three of our schools receive this type of recognition?
Not to my knowledge, since I've been in this position.
Really?
Not to my knowledge.
Gotcha.
Is it, and Mr. Satin just said the Prime Center is also a fairly new recognition.
Gotcha. Great. Congrats to all three of them. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.11?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And consent agenda item 4.12, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now to decisions under unfinished business. The 2025 series funding. Dr. Fraley and Courtney.
Hi. How are you? Good. Good to see everybody again. Can you hear me okay? I'm not good with the microphone. So really, it's more of just a continuation from the conversation at the end of March from earlier this year, with an action item in addition. So there's two little packets. The first one with the paperclip, a few things I want to highlight. One, just want to point out from the conversation in March, the things that have changed or have developed. One, we went to S&amp;P in order to get this financing rated, the $15 million. The district received the same rating on this financing as what it had on previous financings. So you, as a district, are rated at a double A minus, with an A plus on the lease. Considering S&amp;P changed their rating criteria at the end of 2024, and they were actually a lot more harsh on school districts overall, the fact that you have kept your rating, I think, is fantastic and speaks to the strong, obviously, the industry that's in the area, as well as the residential growth, but as well as just the financial, you know, health and stability of the district. So well done on that. The first couple of pages are really just some of the due diligence. So one of the big assumptions that I'm using within the cash flows is a 1.5% growth in assessed valuation. Where, as you can see on this first page, over the last five years, the district has been averaging right around 4.5%. Skipping to page five. We have a repayment schedule for a $15 million lease financing for consideration. A couple of things that have changed since the end of March. One, I'm assuming, a funding in mid-June. With principal starting in '31 out to '46, so 21 years. You'll notice that the coupon is at 5%, which is identical to what I had presented in March. The difference now with what I've included is on the next page, so on page six. I've included a pricing summary, so we can look at the re-offering premium that I'm projecting with this particular financing. If you look at the third and the fourth column, so that third column, the coupon, this is the interest rate with which the district will pay interest expense to the various investors. Then a column to the right of that, the yield, these are the actual rates that the investor will realize as of the call date of April 15, 2030. So if you recall, the 20 million, $25 million financing that was done last year had a seven-year call feature. We are going back to a five-year call feature on this financing, similar to previous ones, '19, '20, and 2021. When we get to the resolution, there'll be a couple of blanks within there. Those blanks correspond to the re-offering premium that will be generated with the financing. So with this particular structure, having a coupon of 5% and yields ranging from 3.88 to 4.96 generates prices, two columns over greater than 100%. Multiplying that maturity by that price will get you the dollar price in that far right column. If you compare the final dollar price to the final maturity, of which the district will only be paying back the $15 million, there's a generated re-offering premium of just over $144,000. So this is the number that we're projecting that can, it is subject to change based upon our marketing efforts and what we are able to lock in with investors. The lower the yield, the higher the re-offering premium, and vice versa. As far as upon closing with this particular structure, and ideally, we want to get less than what I'm showing as far as those yields to generate slightly more re-offering premium, which can then be used to pay a more majority of those closing costs on page seven. So we have the proceeds of just $15 million, copying over that re-offering premium of just under $145,000. The cost of issuance are in line with what the district approved within our agreement from two years ago, when you extended the capital projects levy. So after subtracting out those costs of issuance, all of which are one-time fees, except for that registrar-paying agent and trustee bank, which is exactly the same as what you have been paying on your other financings, just over $14.8 million. So if that re-offering premium goes up, the deposit of the construction fund also goes up. On page eight, I did just want to have a repayment schedule to, once again, continue the conversation from March. So at that time, we were looking at either $10 million in '18, or $15 in '13. So this is just that same $13 million repayment schedule, so that you would have it for background. But then the big thing pointing out with the spreadsheet, pages nine and 10, this is the cash flow that I used in order to structure the financing for the $15 million and the subsequent hypothetical $13 million, you know, just with what information we have now based upon assessed valuation. So assuming the 70-cent Capital Projects Fund levy remains in place, as well as a little bit of money you get from state assessed, as well as revenue from other sources, there are only two years, next year and the year after, that any money from classroom trust funds or the 7% transfer would need to be deposited into the Capital Projects Fund to help make the lease payments. And that's to finish off the '19, '20, and '21 financings. From there, the levies and other revenues, not including classroom trust funds and 7% transfer, are more than adequate to make the payments on '24, '25, and then a subsequent even '27. Obviously, as refinancings happen, any prepayments, it does open it up for larger and more financings, as was the case when you originally passed the Capital Projects Fund levy back in 2007. There were a few more projects that were done on top of just the initial high school. I've blown up on page 10, just that spreadsheet, so it's a lot easier. I can see it a lot better. So in the green column, you have the revenues copied over. The orange column, the total net lease payments. And you'll notice in that '24 to '25 versus, in the '26 to '27, those years, those surplus funds, that's because of adding in that classroom trust fund 7%, just to get to where you're at those payments. But then you see even years after that, with all of these financings, there are still surpluses generated from the Capital Projects Fund. And really, the big driver within the cash flow is that it is only assuming a 1.5% growth. It's not taking into any consideration new construction that can be going in, or any reassessments, large reassessments. And I know this year is a reassessment year. So the big thing is, the bottom line is, you can afford this $15 million on top of the '25 you've already done, those other financings prior to that, as well as a future one. Right now, looking at 13, but obviously, that can change as more information is gathered and as time goes on. Are there any questions on the numbers before I look at the resolution? So the stapled piece of paper, that's about 10 pages long, is the actual approval item for this evening. At the very top, in all caps, is a summary of the document. So you'll notice that issuing $15 million of financings, this is that first blank that I was referring to, plus the net re-offering premium. So once we have commitments, and we have interest rates that can be locked in, that number would then subsequently be filled in. On the back of the first page, on page two, under section one, it's about the third line in that first paragraph. You'll see, "Such interest rate shall not exceed a yield for arbitrage purposes of 5.4%." So on the original numbers that I was showing on Schedule Five, the bond yield for arbitrage, which is the effective interest rate, we're at 4.895%. This is stating that with approval, the final terms committee, which is in a later section, can approve the final interest rates as long as that effective interest rate does not exceed 5.4%. Hence, why you see underneath that in that table, the interest rates and the yields are left blank. I do have those principal amounts, though, that are copied over from Schedule Five. And this eliminates the need to have another board meeting, or in a special board meeting, say in June, in order to come back. At the top of page three, explicitly, as I had mentioned, it is a five-year call feature. So the certificates would be callable in April of 2030 to allow for restructuring, or if there is additional cash that doesn't need to be used for any projects, you can make prepayments on this financing. Moving along to page six, under section nine. Continuing disclosure. So in addition to that registrar-paying agent and trustee bank fee, that is an ongoing expense, as long as the certificates are outstanding, the only other obligation to the district that is ongoing is your continuing disclosure. So it's submitting both your audit, as well as updated operating data, so your largest taxpayers, your largest employers, enrollment trends, to the MSRB on an annual basis. You are already doing this with your other financings, so it's just a continuation of that for as long as they're outstanding. And finally, on page nine, under section 10, the establishment of the final terms committee. So by approving this resolution, it sets up a committee of Dr. Fraley, Ms. Nichols, and Tom Fazarkowitz within our office, and you can add others if you want, to lock in the final interest rates and the terms, closing procedure, or the closing, the call feature, on behalf of the full board, without having to have another meeting or a special meeting. It gives them the authorization to do so. And the authorization that we can go and market the certificates to investors. That's it. What questions does anyone have?
Any questions?
This isn't your first rodeo.
All right. If there are no questions, I will go with asking for a motion to approve a resolution for the sale and issuance of the Series 2025 lease certificates of participation to LJ Hart and Company as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And we need to have a roll call vote on this item, so Barbara?
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be safe going home, please.
Yes, please be safe.
It's been crazy weather, so I hope it'll at least calm down just a little.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is Ms. Brownfield with Amplify.
Yes, bringing back to you the proposal for our Amplify Science program at the junior high building, for a total of $132,005.92. It's a three-year agreement, thoroughly vetted, and Ed Reports' seal of approval aligns much better with our state standards.
Are there any questions from Ms. Brownfield?
How many different programs did you all look at?
We looked at, overall, two or three, well, no, more than two. We thoroughly piloted and vetted through, one of them through the Dana Center. We looked at Open ZID, and then Amplify was the second one. We looked at some others that were recommended to us, but they did not have good ratings on Ed Reports, so we did not move forward with those.
Any other questions?
I'll move the approval of the three-year agreement with Amplify Science for $132,005.92.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And that is approved. Thank you. Next item is the Smith Cotton Junior High baseball and softball program proposal. Mr. Middleton and Mr. Foster.
Good evening. I didn't know if there's any other questions or further discussion you guys wanted to talk with Mr. Foster or myself about with the addition of junior high baseball and softball, starting next year, spring, they would both be in the spring of '26 then.
Any questions?
I have a question. Will the games, half-score crew and treasurer that will be through our staff, like you currently have with high school?
Yeah, it'd have to be used through our personnel, yeah.
So I'm assuming that you guys are going to reevaluate where they're at on the extra-duty salary schedule, since you're adding games?
Probably gonna have to, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how many coaches do you have anticipated to work with?
Yeah, how many coaches do you have anticipated to work with each?
I'd like, I'd like three for each, a head and two assistants for each, for each sport. Yep. We really, I mean, especially, we're anticipating a big number for baseball, I'd really like to be able to have as many coaches as possible to help with the everyday practices when we break them in to play in our squad games. There's gonna be some times where we take a team, maybe to Canvaton or Buffalo, and we need someone to stay home with the rest of the guys, so. And softball can easily be the same way, hopefully, we have good numbers in that.
I just wanted to reiterate, I, I run that baseball league in town that I mentioned before, there's a ton of growth coming. I mean, there is multiple, multiple teams, second most I've ever had in the nineteen years. And so from ten-year-olds all the way up, there's a lot of kids coming on the baseball side. I can't speak specifically on the softball, but this would definitely have strong interest.
Do you anticipate having any problems obtaining coaches?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think, and just going back to your coaches' point, we definitely have some coaches in our district already that see the need for our school coaches to get their hands on these kids compared to what I call dad ball. I mean, I even take it for myself, dad ball, so I, I wanna get the professionals to coach our kids through and not mom and dads on the weekends and stuff like that, to kinda get them ready for high school.
I agree.
Anything else? I will ask for a motion to approve the addition of junior high baseball and junior high softball programs at Smith Cotton Junior High to begin in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And Mr. Pyle, the concrete project at Smith Cotton High School and the alternates?
Yes. During the April Board of Education meeting, bids for a concrete project at Smith Cotton High School were rejected. District administration recommended at that time that the rejection be considered as a discrepancy was noted in the bids, as you'll recall. The district communicated with the bidders that provided bids initially and advertised this opportunity, as we wanted to give them an opportunity to bid again, and then someone else that might have seen that advertisement could have also had that same opportunity to then bid for the project along with those alternates. We did have a bid opening for the project on May seventh, and I'm gonna go through the construction summary for those that may be listening in. The base bid area was to remove asphalt from the existing east bus lane at Smith Cotton High School and three other high-traffic locations where concrete will replace the asphalt. Pour new concrete was according to the scope of work that was provided. Alternates one and two was, would be to remove damaged asphalt and improve the area with new concrete that is down at the Heckert, or so where we're at tonight, kinda behind us, where a bus lane comes in and helps special, some special students that get on at that location. Alternates three through six were to add additional concrete to the baseball stadium area for, for additional seating that had been improved prior, and other areas included high-traffic areas that were not included in the original project, once we've opened that athletic complex and the activity complex to, to just realize the traffic that needed to be covered there. So alternate seven was to remove a large portion of the asphalt behind Horseman Elementary, and that, kind of an idea for you from the main rear entrance eastward to the fence area, so this replaces most of the asphalt between the building and the new turf area there.
Okay.
So I'll flip over and give you, kinda summarize the bids that come in, since I've described the alternates, I'll just give a total bid and then be able to talk through questions if they come up. Ramey Construction Company of Sedalia, Missouri provided a total bid of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Macollister Construction of Sedalia provided a total bid of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars, and Septagon Construction of Sedalia provided a bid of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. I'll note that we, from, if we remember back in April when we rejected those bids, we added eleven thousand square feet, and, and the bid from Ramey come in at thirty thousand dollars cheaper than the closest bid, and a hundred thousand dollars cheaper than what the original bid would have been from the first project as to one of the bidders, so just to prove again how competitive they were. So just very pleased with the interest from these three reputable companies that, that bid on this project, and tonight I recommend the acceptance of the total bid of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars from Ramey Construction Company of Sedalia. The total bid includes the parking areas at Smith Cotton High School and the seven alternates as we described tonight.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? Do I hear a motion to approve the bid submitted by Ramey Construction Company in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the concrete project at Smith Cotton High School, which includes the base bid for the east bus lane and three other high-traffic locations, as well as alternates number one through number seven, for additional concrete work at the high school baseball stadium and the replacement of asphalt behind Horseman Elementary as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Very good, thank you. Motion passed. Next item is the primary grocery vendor for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Mr. Curry?
Last month, we released requests for proposals on primary grocery vendor, and we did receive three responses back. All three responses were qualifying responses. Each of the three vendors do provide very similar services that meet the needs of the district. However, when we calculated the projected annual cost, you can see those listed in here by the three responses. Benny Keith was narrowly lower than Springfield Grocery and Gold Star Foods. Again, all three of these are qualified vendors that do meet our needs, and it's our recommendation that we retain Benny Keith as our primary grocery vendor for a two-year extension, and we will rebid again two years.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? Do I hear a motion to approve Benny Keith as primary grocer vendor for an agreed two years to begin July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven, as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And that is approved. Thank you. And the next propose, request for proposal is the dairy supplies vendor. Mr. Curry?
Yes, also last month, we released the same request for a dairy provider. We had one qualified response from Highland Dairy, who has been our dairy provider for many years now, and the only provider that is able to provide us with daily milk deliveries. So they continue to be a good partner, and we look forward to working with them moving forward as well, and I'd recommend approving the acceptance of their bid.
Any questions for Mr. Curry? No. Do I hear a motion to approve Highland Dairy as the dairy supplies vendor for an agreed two years to begin July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven, as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Thank you. And the next item, Mr. Pyle, is the asphalt project at Smith Cotton High School.
Yes, the district's approved long-range facility plan includes an asphalt project at Smith Cotton High School. As you know, if we'd like to move forward with this project, then as the new overlay in asphalt will provide a more durable and improved travel surface for years to come, as we'll point out, there, there have been some work done to this parking lot through the years, but not a true overlay of the asphalt, and, and just sealing is what we've been able to do. So it has held together for the first fifteen years of being open, and it's time to give it some attention. The district advertised the opportunity and held a bid opening on May fourteenth, and this is another project that we were pleased with, would have proven companies in their field showing interest. We sought out some, you know, just by contact and said, hey, the bid opportunity's there, and Hollison Miller also provided some for us to reach out to. So in the packet, and for those listening, listed, we have, give a contractor summary of what they provided as a bid for, for this project. Capital Paving out of Jefferson City, Missouri provided a total bid of four hundred and forty-eight thousand. Higgins Asphalt of Tipton, Missouri provided a bid of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Most, Most Seal Asphalt Services of Fulton provided a bid of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. Philip Sitework of Kansas City provided a total bid of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Based on the evaluation of all the bids and company reference checks that we checked on, I recommend awarding the contract for this project to Capital Paving from Jefferson City at a cost of four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? Might, will this be completed over the summer?
Yes.
They'll be able to have it done before our staff comes?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the weather permitting, they, they actually hope to start within the, the second Monday of June, and they're telling us this project, weather permitting, if everything goes well, they would be done by the Fourth of July is their goal.
Nice.
Will the current paint and chalk overlays of the asphalt have any, give them any problems?
They, they felt like that they would all work through that fine, and then they will out, this project also includes that they will come back and stripe as directed by the team, too. So they felt like things would be okay on that, Mr. Gardner.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pyle? Do I hear a motion to approve Capital Paving for the Smith Cotton High School asphalt project in the amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And thank you. Next is items for decision, and the PCE construction change orders at Smith Cotton Junior High and the Sedalia Middle School. Mr. Pyle?
Yes, PCE continues with the renovation work at Smith Cotton Junior High Gymnasium Building and the Sedalia Middle School. As the project progresses, district administration and construction team have identified change orders for consideration again. Details for change orders numbered thirteen through twenty-one are listed in the packet, and again, we'll go through those for those in the audience and listening. I wanna point out that there was no change order number twenty, change order number twenty was noted and declined. The change orders for consideration for Board of Education approval tonight are, number thirteen was a Smith Cotton Junior High asbestos abatement at its bandroom flooring. I'll just point out the cost, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for that work. The number fourteen change order was Smith Cotton Junior High volleyball court sleeves and post, that was twelve hundred and ten dollars. Number fifteen, Smith Cotton Junior High lobby ceiling replacement, gym foyer, four thousand, two hundred and five ninety-five, that was one where we were going to keep that ceiling, and when we first walked through it, and then the close, as we know, is the more work you do, and then you think, well, should we have considered that? There was some rust along some of the trim, and it just, it needed, needed to be done, if we can consider that. Number sixteen, Smith Cotton Junior High door widening of the bandroom, that's, they've had to turn instruments sideways, some of the larger instruments for years, and, you know, to help get some of the bandroom items out of there, so that, that was something that we felt was time to make that change at eight thousand, eighty-five, eighty-one. Sedalia Middle School ceiling work administrative office, that was one that was not figured in the original bid, that's one that we should have, you know, considered originally, we, for some reason, that was not caught, that even went back to some of the guided entry work from the first project. So that was one of the larger costs of these change orders at fifty-five thousand, nine nineteen twenty-three, but it would go along with all the other ceiling work that's happening. Number eighteen, Sedalia Middle School casework for teacher storage area at ninety-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty, thirty cents, that is for all those areas in those east and west wings that are more or less storage areas, kinda like you walk through them to get into the classroom, and there's cabinetry and different things in there for those teachers, and that was not figured in the original bid. Number nineteen is Smith Cotton Junior High's new HVAC for the bandroom, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents. That, I'll point out that there is actually some change in masonry work up high that needs to take place, changing the structure of the, some of the ceiling work in there as well, so it's more than just that HVAC, but it, it takes that to get that accomplished. And number twenty-one, the Smith Cotton Junior High and Sedalia Middle School restroom epoxy flooring wall application, this will come up on the walls in every, all four walls in these restrooms to look a lot like what happened at the middle school previously in the, in the former locker room, so that was something that will, will be just a nice addition to those areas. Before I make the recommendation, we've talked to PCE and Hollison Miller to, you know, as we bring these change orders to you, we believe there will be a minimal, two more change orders in the next month, and then we hope that we're done with the change orders on this, on this project. So tonight, it is my recommendation to accept the change orders numbered thirteen through nineteen and twenty-one for the Smith Cotton Junior High School and Sedalia Middle School, they total two hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle?
What's, are there, is there going to be a future change order on the, on the hallways in the junior high building where the band and gym are?
On the flooring?
Yeah, the flooring.
It's not in the current scope of work, no.
Okay. Probably gonna be done eventually, just like Heber Hunt's. Okay, all right.
Something. With flooring at the junior high and the remodeling of the classrooms at the junior high are kinda next on the priority list.
Okay.
Are there any question, any other questions for Mr. Pyle?
Move the approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Thank you, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you.
And Mr. Curry, the custodial position addition at SMS?
Yes, as we near the transition of our fourth grade over to SMS, Mr. Pyle and Mr. Net, Mr. Simons and I have been evaluating whether or not we could potentially move a current member of the custodial team from a, one building over to SMS, and the reality is that we're not losing any space at any of those other buildings, and more than likely the spaces that are being vacated are still gonna be used by, you know, something within the schools, and they're still gonna need to be maintained and cleaned. So the reality is, we need to add a custodial position to help facilitate the cleaning and proper maintenance of that middle school building when we double its size next year. And if we can add that position now, that'll give them a good couple of solid months of training and preparation, and that middle school building's gonna need a lot of help and attention with all the moves that still are going to take place this summer, with vacating a lot of classrooms so that they can undergo the remodel, and then cleaning of all those classrooms and waxing of those floors and all that stuff that takes place in the summer months. So we feel like if we can go ahead and add this now and get this individual hired, get him a good training opportunity and get him started, supporting the middle school this summer.
Sure. Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the addition of a custodial position at Sedalia Middle School for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. That motion carries. Next item is a donation from the Pettis County Health Department, Ms. Stark?
The past year, I've been working on the Pettis County Health Coalition very closely. We've had quite a few topics that we've been geared towards, one is pedestrian safety. They had some money left over in their grant and called me over and asked if I wanted to help spend it. So the things I needed within the school district, I asked for these three things, and I am asking for you to approve the donation from the Pettis County Health Department.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for Ms. Stark?
Can you find some more things like this?
I'm trying.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Pettis County Health Department donation of traffic safety signs, including stop signs and crosswalk signs and benches as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Curry, the fiscal year twenty-five school violence prevention program resolution?
This is a grant opportunity that we were recently made aware of. The U.S. Department of Justice and the Community Oriented Policing Services Agency, our office, released this grant opportunity. We had been tracking other safety grant possibilities earlier this, this fiscal year, this school year, this calendar year, and some of them were put on hold and were not going to be authorized to be released or to be accepting applications. This grant is remaining, apparently, at this current time, is rem... This grant is remaining, apparently at this current time, is remaining funded, and it provides us an opportunity to submit a grant that could award us up to five hundred thousand dollars. It is a twenty-five percent matching grant, so the district could be liable to up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if we were to receive a full five hundred thousand dollars in funding from the U.S. Department of Justice. It can help us with security costs, as we know. We have, certainly have security areas in cameras and radios. Those things are all technology-based. They do warrant being replaced from time to time, and we're actually seeing that currently with our radios that we have district-wide. They are no longer made, so we have to upgrade now as we currently buy replacement radios, so there's a possibility of that. We also have numerous cameras that are old, and the technology is not as high quality as it could be. So there's opportunity for us to utilize this grant, but we need the district, obviously, to agree to match twenty-five percent of, if we were awarded anything. So that's why I bring this to you tonight, because the first requirement for grant submission is due on June eighteenth. It's a two-part submission, which is prior to our next board meeting, so that's why we kind of threw this in last minute to get the district's approval for us to move forward with writing a grant in which Director Stark and myself will work with Ms. Walton to get prepared and submitted by the due dates in June.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution to apply for the fiscal year twenty-five school violence prevention program grant offered by the U.S. Department of Justice's Community Oriented Poli, Poli, Policing Services, known as COPS Office, seeking the maximum grant amount of five hundred thousand dollars and authorize the commitment to the required local cost share of twenty-five percent as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Norton?
Yeah, I'll take that.
You'll take that? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Norton, Mr. Rader not here this evening, but wanted to recognize Interstate Studio. They have generously offered the use of their auditorium space at no cost for our CAPS program for the upcoming school year, so we want to thank Interstate Studio and that gratuitous donation of their space for our kids.
Convenient, too.
I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions, Dr. Fraley, on that. Do you know how they're going to utilize that space?
My understanding is it's going to be, you know, it's, if you've never been there, it's a, it's a fairly large room, so to be able to have the whole group meetings instead of being scattered, not that they won't still be scattered around town, but they'll have a location where they can all collectively meet. In addition to, it's set up with a stage for presentation work.
The teachers won't be housed there, will they? Because I know, like, right now, I think Ms. Harvey is housed at one of the business, Maxim. Will we be housing any of our teachers there as their classroom?
I, that's a big question for Mr. Wright. I'm not, I don't know that we're abandoning our other locations.
Okay.
All together by any means.
So they're donating the space, but is the district going to have to supply the furnishings and the technology?
I, I don't believe we're providing anything.
Okay.
And it is, I know in the agreement, it did say that access is limited to eight AM to three PM, so it would be during the school hours, so. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve Interstate Studio's donation of their auditorium for the CAPS program use free of charge for the school year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the district property at seventeen hundred South Lafayette?
Yes, the bid opening for the renovation of the district seventeen hundred South Lafayette building was held on May thirteenth. The district would like to move forward with finishing this space to be the future home of the central office along with the technology and food service businesses offices. We were pleased again with the amount of interest in this project as well and the competitive bids that were turned in. I have attached in the board packet was a recommendation letter from Hollison Miller, a bid tabulation sheet, and two AIA contracts, one oh-one and one oh-two, for consideration tonight. I'll provide a brief overview of the contractors who submitted the bids and their respective totals to complete the project, go through that for us tonight. The Excel Constructors was one of the teams from Overlook Park, Kansas. They provided a base bid of three million, twenty-six, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The alternate one is a boardroom ceiling, and what that is, I'll just go through the alternates one time unless there's questions on it. The ceiling, the first bid that they showed us had just a two-by-four ceiling tile, and then further that we talked through that, that they wanted to add some wood and make it more of an executive-looking board bearing. It would, it would look better, more professional-looking, but it's also about the sound and the, and the quality of being able to do presentations in there, so it was more than just the looks, but that is what alternate one is. Alternate two is, is the windows there are very narrow, and so we talked about widening those windows. There's nineteen windows total, so alternate two, each bidder provided an opportunity of what that would cost to provide, widen and replace all nineteen windows. So, and that first one was ninety thousand, two ninety-nine for that. I will go through the next contractors and just give you a total bid. Total bid from Excel, base and alternates, was three million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. The move to the next bidder was Clausen Construction of Clinton, Missouri. Their total bid with those alternates that was described was two million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. McCollister Construction of Sedalia, Missouri. Total bid from them with the basin alternates that we spoke about was three million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. PCE out of Columbia, Missouri, provided a total bid, base and alternates of three million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. And we had a bid from Westport Construction out of Clinton, Missouri as well. Their, their base bid and the alternates described was three million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Tonight, I recommend the Board of Education approve and accept Clausen Construction to complete the project for a total of two million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. This price includes the base bid plus alternates one and two, and that's, that's for the work there. There will be costs for Hollison Miller and things as, as we work through, you know, their guidance for drawing of the plans and different things, but the actual contract price for this is two million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? And my question again is a completion date. I mean, are you, do you have a start and finish?
Yeah, they, they've kind of, they talked about maybe starting midsummer.
Okay.
And then we would hope to be done. They're talking about if things work well for them and schedules, and if this is approved tonight, the next school year during spring break, so that would allow some time for us to start considering.
March twenty-sixth.
Okay, okay.
Ish.
Ish. I've learned that ish stuff.
Ish with construction, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Pyle?
I, I will say that that company, I didn't, it's Claus, I don't think it's pronounced Clausen, I can't, it's, it's another pronunciation, but I did talk with the superintendents at Clinton. They do quite a bit of work for the Clinton School District, and they were very, very, very pleased.
Okay. Anything else? I will hear a motion to approve the bid to Clausen Construction for the seventeen hundred South Lafayette district property totaling two million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, which includes the base bid, alternate one and alternate two as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And the following items are all for discussion, and the first is a school meal pricing, Mr. Curry?
During this school year, our food service department has undergone an audit by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We knew that throughout that audit, they would find issues that we would need to address within the department. One of those, we were well aware, was going to be our meal prices, as we have not adjusted meal prices in the last three or four years. So part of that was ensuring that we fall in line and meet the requirements of the Paid Lunch Equity Act, which is part of a national hunger-free, or Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. So that's ensuring that we are appropriately pricing our meals so that we are not falling too far behind, which is what our current state is. We're, our meals are priced so low that we're not keeping up with inflation costs, and especially since the impact of the pandemic and what that's done with goods and services, and so knowing that, they provided this tool to us to use to evaluate our current prices and what we need to do in order to start addressing those and meet those, those changes moving forward. So as you can see, and we also had to identify what our current adult prices are, so they looked at our elementary prices, breakfast, lunch, and our secondary prices, breakfast, lunch, as well as our adult prices. Our adult prices are not eligible for reimbursement because our adults are not students, and they aren't, we just don't get reimbursed for those costs. So how we calculate the adult cost, you'll see, they're kind of in the middle of the memo. You have to look at your highest paid student price, which is two dollars and forty cents, and you have to look at what the reimbursement costs are for commodities, which is fifty-six cents, and the paid lunch reimbursement from the state level, which is fifty-three cents, and you add all those up, and it'll tell, tell you what our adult price should be. Right now, our current adult price is three dollars and needs to be at least three dollars and forty-nine cents. So you can see in, in what we'll end up recommending and bringing back to you next month are these changes in prices, adjusting prices for lunch and breakfast at ten cents, and those off-the-card items, again, at ten cents, and milk at five cents, and then, of course, the adult meal prices, a recommended increase of fifty cents to those. And what we did learn throughout this audit as well, though, is that the district has the ability to look at adult portion servings. So we can provide different portion sizes for adults. It's just, again, you're, ultimately, we, it would be the inventory that we, you know, purchase that would decrease as we increase portion sizes, but could we, you know, justify giving slightly larger portion sizes to our adults as, as a district offering? So that's something that we will certainly consider. But again, this will come back to us next month for, for a vote, but this was an item identified throughout our audit that, again, we knew we were going to have to address moving forward because we had not done so in several years.
Any questions for Mr. Curry?
Nope.
So we will see this next month.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And Mr. Curry, again, on the zero hour for speed, agility, and weights at the high school?
Yes, this has kind of been an ongoing discussion that Dr. Fraley had started with the board about expanding our speed and agility programming. Moving forward, looking into next year and how we structure that and organize it, we need placeholders within our frontline system to assign staff to that, to, as basically an additional teaching period. So not hiring necessarily new people, but being able to offer our people an additional teaching period on the books. So that would be what we would come back and bring back to you, is the addition of three additional teaching periods, two for speed and agility, and one for weight room here at the high school. And again, the, the concept will, will be established hopefully in one of these, actually, it's the next change that you see under discussion following this. But as we get the programming structured on how this will work, we have talked extensively between Mr. Middleton, Mr. Foster, and Dr. Fraley, and myself, and the current teaching staff of how we program this, how we can get kids incentivized to attend, because it is not mandatory. It's there to benefit all of these students, whether you're involved in, you know, whether it's band or music, or anybody that's involved in our activities will have an opportunity to attend this. And how we, again, how we organize it, we're thinking like six-week timeframes that'll rotate them through, plus you look at, that's how our schedules are set up for most of our activities, you, you know, at least sports-wise. You talk about somebody getting ready to prepare for the winter basketball season, you know, this would be great for them to attend the first six-week session and prepare them moving into their season. And then, again, so on, so, you know, then after, after your season's over, you could do a session over the winter months or a session in the spring. You know, again, just opportunities for our athletes, our student athletes and those involved in our activities to have a chance to get in, put in some extra time, get some extra training and programming work, and see the improvements on the fields and in the activities.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry on this?
I have one. I'm full of them tonight, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, go.
Mr. Curry, on the three, the three positions, that's just not going to be like three people all year long. Is it going to be that you're wanting to put in the budget, the cost of three positions, and then if your basketball coaches wanted to work during that six weeks, they could take advantage of that extra money, and then so forth with soccer? If it was their turn, then the soccer coaches could do something.
Well, and that's what we're going to look at, is we're going to try to identify a number of people that would be willing and be committed to come and be involved in this, because we are going to, we're seeking out some training opportunities. Again, part of that will be in the programming that's developed of how we implement this and how we structure it. And we also need, you know, not everybody, you only, if you only had three people and somebody sick, or, you know, how do you, you know, we have all these students coming, we got to make sure that we've got people in place to, to facilitate the programming and as well to support it if somebody's not there. So it's basically, yes, providing a placeholder on the books for, for these opportunities to happen, and however many people are needed to, and to make it happen is what we'll figure out moving forward as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Extra duty activities director assistant change for 2025-26, Dr. Fraley and Mr. Curry on this one?
I threw this in here, again, talking about how we facilitate this program and this, this additional training. Dr. Fraley had this extra duty activities director assistant position established on the extra duty salary schedule several years ago, but it's never been filled. So this extra duty position remains on our books, but is never, it's been budgeted for, it's just not, never been occupied. So transitioning this position into the speed and agility and whatever, what did I call it? Speed agility programming and weight training coordinator, that will, again, this will give somebody an opportunity to be responsible for setting the schedule, organizing the students, knowing who's coming when, working on, again, establishing the programming that's going to be involved with the speed and agility side, and even looking at, you know, we've had conversation about programming of, of weight training, specific programming for, you know, what is your activity? What is it that you're involved in? Because we all know that you can provide different training in the weight room for different activities as well. So this can get into developing, you know, working more with our coaches that we have in place of all of our different activities and, and programs of, you know, what do you see as being the need in your, in a weight training program for your student athlete? So again, this just transitions that title from that extra duty activities director assistant into what we'd call the speed, agility, and weight training coordinator.
Similar to, we had discussed earlier at board meetings about the swag type of training that had previously been discussed and approved.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry or Dr. Fraley? No? Okay. And the next item, Mr. Curry, is Regulation 1420, the community use of our facilities?
If you recall, we started this conversation almost a year ago as well, as we look to address and update rental fee schedules for our different facilities. And at that time, we had then begun the concept or the, the discussion of expanding our athletic complex out here, so we kind of put this on hold. I did take this regulation and run it through our legal counsel, get some advice for them on just verbiage of what should be contained within it. Then we compared and looked at several different school districts and what their facility rental pricing and stuff looked like, and this is all kind of based on the research that we've seen and what we've seen from other districts, and it varies greatly. I know that some districts, large districts, who, I mean, they have a single person who is responsible for advertising, promoting the use of their facilities, and then also running the, the, how that it's scheduled, how it's billed out, and all those stuff in these, in these large districts. And we, we certainly didn't want to make it too extensive, but, you know, for example, right now, it's just the expansion of our athletic complex. Mr. Middleton has taken on the scheduling and, and billing of that and help, with the help of Ms. Kristy Johnson in our office. So kind of keeping in place what we currently have with Ms. Johnson booking most district facilities and making sure that the insurance coverage is there and all of that information, the billing goes out. But again, we had a lot of updated facilities that costs had not been included. We have a lot- that costs had not been included. We have a lot of activities that require the use of a technical director for lighting and sound, and security for when you have outside large events, or even the use of our scoreboards and those kind of things. So those opportunities were not really in our current regulation, and as you all know, regulations aren't voted upon, but we did want to bring this to you, obviously get any feedback from the board on moving forward. There is, the current regulation still has the middle school pool in place and all those requirements to use the pool, so that has been updated, as well as, again, adding in all of the new facilities that we do have in place. And a rental schedule, potential rental schedule for what those would cost. And again, we also have within the verbiage the ability for, as long as these activities meet the district vision and goals that support our programs, then we have the ability to always not charge for the use of those events, such as our own basketball developmental program, you know, teams being able to use our new fields to practice on and those kind of things. But we also wanted something in place that if another organization wanted to have a large tournament or something, that, you know, we had fees that were appropriate moving forward for all the costs that do, you know, maintaining our own, our own facilities, providing the appropriate people to be able to work them. We wanted something in place that met us in 2025 and not in, I don't know when this was last reviewed, but it's been quite a while.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry?
Will copy of this be?
It was last updated February of 2019, so it's been a while.
Will copies of this be given to the Chamber, Missouri State Fair, and the State Fair Community College, and then Sedalia Parks and Rec?
I mean, we certainly can. We, I mean, obviously, these regulations, once appropriate feedback's been received, then we would bring the regulation back for information purposes next month likely. And then after that, we would have it updated on our website with our policies and regs, but we can certainly provide it to any of these entities that, you know, would benefit from it.
Just to comment, I guess, you know, not too long ago, we had half of a turf field in our community, and then we went to one and a half turf fields with Tiger Stadium and Liberty Park, half of Liberty Park. Soon, we're to have about eight or nine turf fields in our community, if State Fair Community College is able to get what I think they're hoping for as well. And so my honest hope, I mean, I host events, and my hope for our community is, is that we can somehow bring those type of events even on a bigger scale here. Because if you just take, for example, a youth soccer tournament, right now, we could host many of them in our community, you know, and it takes a lot of hotels, it takes a lot of planning. But I think the long-term vision for Sedalia is that when State Fair Community College gets their facilities, for example, in baseball, you could have three turf fields and a very large baseball tournament in this community. That's just baseball. If you want to talk about soccer, you're going to have a turf soccer field, you got two practice fields back here, you got the football field, it's got lines on it, you got Cloverdale Park, see what I mean? The community growth that we're experiencing, this can be a big part of it, and these use fees are, they need to be in line, they need to be in place, because we don't want to prevent those things coming to our community, but we don't want to open ourselves up to access from just anybody, you know?
True.
So I really hope that long-term, our community can all work together, because there's the potential to really bring in some nice stuff.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Curry? The junior high basketball expansion for 2025-26, Mr. Middleton and Mr. Foster?
All right. We kind of have an opportunity, when I was doing the scheduling for basketball this year, a lot of schools are going to where now they only have two teams, it's a seventh and eighth grade team. We were having, we were doing seventh and eighth A/B teams. So they're merging to get smaller, and I think we have an opportunity to kind of take some of the assistance that we have and go down to the lower levels to help our programs. The numbers for tryouts have been lower, especially on the girls' side. Girls, we had 11 girls this year, which is low. So we really need to kind of think of how we need to attract more kids to get involved. So what I was thinking is kind of putting the two teams together for both seventh and eighth grade, boys, seventh and eighth grade girls together, one head coach for both. Take those assistants, and now we'd go into our fifth and sixth grade, give them some activities and some opportunities to play, be coached under people that have been coaching. We are in talks with a group called Show Me Shootout. They will come in every Saturday, they get the teams, they get the leagues. Our kids, our fifth and sixth grade teams would play for free. Our assistants are already on the books that we have right now. They play two games for a six-week span, so they would play 12 games, they would practice four days a week. And I think the focus with those teams is getting more kids involved and the fundamentals. Our coaches have 14 days to put things in for a season. Fundamentals get left out. We need to get back to basics, and I think this league is going to help us propel and be ready for seventh, eighth grade. It's hearing the same verbiage, same coaching, same drills. So this is something we have talked about as coaches for a while, and now with the teams kind of merging and how the scheduling is changing, that we have an opportunity to do. With no additional costs will be added, we don't need jerseys or anything like that, we have plenty of those items around to send out to the lower levels. But this will be more developmental, and I think this is the first step for a sport. I think there's other sports later that we can do this with as well, to get more kids involved earlier, get them under our coaching umbrella earlier, and start identifying the athletes that we have at a younger age. So that's my, do you have anything you want to add to that?
And this would run when the, their season and stuff would be in, start in January, right?
Yes, their season would start after seventh, eighth grade season ends, the fifth and sixth grade season would start. The beauty of the Show Me Shootout as well is they're going to allow us to have teams from third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. So the seventh, eighth graders could continue to play, they would just have to be coached by somebody else. The fifth and sixth grade will be coached by ours, third and fourth grade will be coached by somebody else. So we have kids that travel to Lee Summit, the lake, Columbia, all over to play basketball, they're no longer going to have to travel. There's going to be a hub for us to play right here. So I think it's opportunity that we would love to take advantage of, and we just wanted to bring it to your attention.
And it's after the Sedalia Youth Basketball League is wrapped up, and so gym, gym space and everything is not an issue?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay, so will you be busing fifth grade over to the junior high for practice?
Yes.
Okay. And then, since this other organization's going to kind of be running it, they will be, will they be collecting fees at the door for people who want to come and watch? Do they do that? Do they have their own?
Yeah, that's how they kind of make their money. Our teams would be free.
Okay.
But they're going to get their money from the teams that they bring in, and they will have admissions. We will get concessions. We will have whoever we want to run concessions, that would be us.
Okay.
So we would, Ochs Gym here, High School Gym.
So there'd be no other, we wouldn't have to provide anything except for the coaches, which are already on the books?
That's it.
Okay.
They take care of everything else, so it's.
And do they provide the emergency medical services, so trainers or?
They would probably, we would have that in the fee that they would pay us to use our facilities. They would have to pay for it.
Are you thinking the games are going to be played at the junior high, then?
We would have, it would be here, Junior High, they might even venture out to Sacred Heart Middle School. With all those grade levels, we will need the gyms.
So what are you thinking about the concessions? Who would run that?
That's a great question. Yeah, I'm open basketball boosters, or any boosters that, I'm going to open it up for any, any of the booster clubs. If you want to make extra, these are going to be going all day long, and they'll be able to set up their venues and go from there.
I just, I just wanted to add, you know, this is the same thing Mr. Gruppi was talking about a minute ago, bringing people to our community, spending dollars in our businesses and staying in our hotels.
I want to commend these two for thinking outside the box. Drilling down is a concept I know that we've talked about, because I'll be honest with you, I mean, I, I love sports almost more than anything, and I've been begging for this type of drill down into our elementary school programs for a long, long time. And I, you know, when my kids were here in school, a lot of parents traveled to a lot of places to try to build the foundation of our, of the athletic programs. And just looking at it from a distance, now even further distance, when the kids, my kids are out, you can see the upticks and the falls in our programs. And I know, I know I talk about sports too much, but we've got to level that out, and it's this type of activity, opportunities for activities that we have needed for so, so long. And so the families and kids that aspire to go to the next level and beyond will continue to build on top of this foundation. But your all's recommendations and thinking outside the box approach is building that foundation even stronger. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Is there a rule that would prevent them from playing whatever club or traveling team they're, they're in, and this, fifth or sixth grade?
With the fifth and sixth grade? No, because it is not, it's not going to be a mission sanctioned sport. This is extra. So they, if they have another travel team, they could play on that travel team and play on this. We want them to play.
Tornado warning, people.
We are under a tornado warning.
Here we go.